We'll call this meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing done, we'll move into the consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. Are there any discussion? Councilman Anderson.
I'd like to talk about the Planning Commission minutes of April 23rd, please.
Sure.
And let's go to the third item. And just, I, this is a great project, I just want to have a little bit of explanation. Maybe Mr. Peterson, if you could perhaps explain on lifeguard outreach housing, please.
Sure. Councilmember Anderson, members of the council. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing regarding a request to establish transitional housing at the former Infinia or Northside Nursing Home. The hearing was actually pretty well attended, a lot of good questions from Northside neighbors, and actually received a lot of support from the people in the neighborhood. They thought that was a great way to reuse that property, which really has very little potential for reuse unless it's used for a facility such as this. The particular use that's proposed to go in there is a transition, form of transition housing, and it can be used by people that are transitioning from addiction treatment as well as incarceration. There are a number of local people that spoke on behalf of the project, as well as the project developer and the initiator of the project, who's from Alexandria, Minnesota. They've operated up there for a number of years and have done so very successfully. We did quite a bit of background work checking them out, and they were actually very highly regarded by the Alexandria community. And the Planning Commission ultimately approved the use because of the support that they saw from the neighborhood. We had one person that said that there was some concern among some of the elderly in the neighborhood regarding safety. That issue was addressed at length, and the individual was very well satisfied with the answers. And it sounds like the residents of these facilities are extremely well monitored. They're put onto a work program, they're on a study program. There just isn't any tolerance for poor behavior. And, you know, beyond that, that's all I can tell you about the use.
Okay. Thank you. It sounds like a very good program.
We just have to vote on this, so all those in favor say aye. Go ahead.
Well, just one comment. I'm on the committee, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this, just to make things clear with the council. My wife and I are both in this group and have been part of it. Also want to make a statement that Mark, who's the director up in Alexandria, when he talked to him, and when he was present at the meeting and asked some of the questions from the people in the audience, some of their concerns at the Planning Commission meeting. And he said, "We want to be good neighbors." And some of the people there, seniors that were there, expressed some concern. He said, "We want to be good neighbors. If you need anything done at your house, like your leaves raked or lawn mowed, we want to be good neighbors and we're going to be there for you." So I, hopefully, it'll be as well received by the neighborhood as what the willingness of this group wants for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Scheduled hearings. We'll open the hearing for the graphic amendment to Municipal District Number Four, or Number Six, I'm sorry.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, we have two public hearings tonight regarding the proposed Genio project. Both of these hearings are related. Little background on the development district. Under Minnesota statutes, there are several different ways that tax increment financing districts can be established. The method that the city has historically used is to create a municipal development district and then to create tax increment financing districts within those municipal development districts. Municipal Development District Number Six was created in 1989 to facilitate economic development projects in the southwest part of town. And you can see that up there, it shows that it's a green shaded area, which is actually the tax increment financing district. But if you followed 22nd Street southwest down to 19th Avenue and then over to the city limits, that property is also in Municipal Development District Number Six. The property that's proposed to be added to that district at this time to facilitate the Genio project is shown in an attachment that you have, but it would also be all of that green shaded property that's located north of Wilmer Avenue and including the current Wilmer Avenue or Highway 40 right-of-way. So to create or to amend the Municipal Development District, staff requests that the council adopt the resolution that amends the legal description as shown in your packet.
Comments from the audience? This is an open public hearing, so if you have comments or questions or answers, let me know. Hearing done, I will turn it over to the council for questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, amend the legal description for Municipal Development District Number Six.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution amending the legal description for Municipal Development District Number Six. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. The tax increment financing for the Genio store project, I'll open the hearing for that.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, tonight, we are again considering the Genio Turkey Store project. In this particular case, it's to consider the use of tax increment financing. Staff has prepared a tax increment financing plan that has been reviewed by city legal council. In the plan are the, primarily on the page after your executive summary, it just shows a workup for the TIF project. It lists the eligible costs, and those could be the roadbed removal, excavation, parking lots, and stormwater control, lighting, utility relocation, and administrative and legal fees that the city would incur. We've estimated that over the life of the district, there would be approximately $594,000 generated. The city is entitled to a max of 10% of that amount to administer the district over the eight-year life of the district. You'll note under Number Three on that particular form that the annual increment payments by taxing jurisdiction are estimated to be $27,200 for the city, $45,400 for the county, and approximately $10,000, $9,900 for the school district. Again, we've estimated the tax increment district would have a maximum duration of eight years, and that's consistent with statute. The developer will pay all of these costs upfront, and we will enter into a development agreement to reimburse the developer as those tax increments are generated and paid. It's important to note that the current annual taxes in the amount of approximately $145,000 will continue to be paid to all the taxing jurisdictions over the course of this tax increment program. Staff sent the financial implications information out to the school district and the county board, and we also met with the school district and county board, received very favorable responses from both. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution approving the tax increment financing plan.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll send one, Mr. Mayor.
Comments from the public first, I'm sorry. Yes, I will close the public hearing at this point and turn it over to the council.
I'll move the recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution approving the tax increment financing plan for the Genio Turkey Store project. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a question of staff. Explain a little bit more about tax increment financing. The developer is going to make $4 million improvements to this site, and additional taxes on that are paid back to the developer?
Right. The way it will work is there's a base tax value established for the district, and that base tax value is what the estimated market value or the tax capacity is today that they are paying taxes on at the Wilmer Avenue plant site only. The way tax increment financing works is that the estimated market value gets converted to a tax capacity for the expansion, for that portion of the property that's being expanded. And the increased taxes specifically from the expansion are available to use for public purpose expenditures as have been identified in the plan. Soil correction, new access, stormwater, utility extensions and relocations. So the city in this particular case fronts no money, the company pays everything upfront, and we will enter into a developer agreement with the company so that as they pay that new higher rate of tax, a portion of that will be repaid to them for those eligible costs that the statute has determined are consistent with municipal development.
Okay. Thank you, Bruce.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll move to introduce the recommend, or make the recommendation of the TIF project as presented.
I think we have.
We have that already? I'm sorry.
You did that.
Okay, and then I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Or just a comment, if I could briefly. You know, we get, you get different people from different sides, Bruce and members of city council and the audience here, who have different opinions of how TIF works and what the pros and what the cons are, whether they need it or not. And I'm just curious, and this has always been an ongoing question and a concern, I'm just wondering if I could share some of my thoughts briefly with you on the use of tax increment financing in the future, and how it affects the city, the county, and the school district, the taxing jurisdictions, and how it may impede future progression of what their long-term plans are, or what their, some of their goals and objectives are. My question or thought is, you know, at what point in time do we say we're maxed out? At what time does the city say, "We cannot afford to give anymore"? It's an ongoing question and concern that I'm sure Mr. Peterson has, and Mr. Reinhart has some really good reasons for defending it. But I guess some of the concerns I've received from people are, "At what point in time do you say enough is enough"? And legitimate questions, nothing wrong with asking, asking that from the people that are setting the tax levies on their properties in the community. But I think in the future, depending on how the progression of our industrial park goes, Mr. Peterson, I'm hoping that we will be able to offer the same type of arrangement for these people. But I'm really curious as to how, and maybe not my personal thoughts are, but what the entire council's thoughts are, and the county, and the school district are, on how we're going to accomplish the needs of things, just go gangbusters here, and we have people knocking on the door to build industrial park. At what point in time are we going to deal with that? Do we have to maybe pre-think this before we get to that point? Is there anything we should be concerned about? I'm just throwing that out as a question on a positive note, that I hope it takes off very well on industrial park, but...
I'd be happy to address that. The whole premise of tax increment financing is that there are projects that will not occur without the use of tax increment financing. If tax increment financing is not used on those projects, the projects are not built, and that future tax revenue is never available to the taxing jurisdictions. What I think makes the most sense is that when you get these requests for tax increment financing, first of all, we have policies that the council has adopted to vet these projects and to evaluate them. If we are faced with a project that the benefits do not outweigh an increase in municipal services or a demand for municipal services that would result from the project, then I think the council really needs to step away from it. At one point, I believe we had 16 functioning tax increment programs in the city of Wilmer at one time. We now will have one again. I believe statute says that a municipality can't exceed more than 15% or 20% of its total tax capacity in a TIF district. We have way under 1% of our municipal tax capacity in tax increment financing districts. So tax increment financing, the way the city of Wilmer has done it, is absolutely no burden on the taxpayers. It, it's very careful that it does not create any tax advantage for a particular business. It's strictly a means of stimulating the increase in the tax base and future employment.
Thank you. I think what you're trying to say is, we have, we have a large margin to fill if people come knocking on the door, and we should be able to meet their needs.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much.
I would welcome the problem.
Thank you, Bruce.
Is there any future discussion, further discussion? Hearing done, this is a roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. We will open the public hearing for state of, the status of the city's 2012 Small Cities Development Program. Jill Bengston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to give you an update on the current Small Cities Development Program and receive any public from the comment, any comments from the public. So with that, we'll, excuse me here. Right one. We need to get an easier device. Okay, thank you. In 2012, the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development awarded the Small Cities Development Program funding from HUD to the city of Wilmer and the city of Raymond in the amount of $1,076,162 to start a residential and commercial rehab program within the two communities. The next slide shows the breakdown of activity by funding. We were awarded $480,000 to do 32 homes within the two communities, $196,350 to do 17 renter-occupied rehabs in a target area, and $267,800 to do eight commercial businesses in downtown Wilmer. So total rehab dollars, $944,150 for 57 homes or units, and $132,012 to administer the grant. Total award, $1,076,162. Next slide shows some examples of rehab and repair that can be completed in the units or the businesses. Typical window, door, roof repairs, replacements, siding replacements, structural founding, foundation repairs, electrical, plumbing, heating, insulation, handicap, accessibility improvements, building code violations. Next slide shows homeowner rehab. For the city of Raymond, we are to do 18 homes there. We have 13 in process. We have committed approximately $186,432, $30, and we have remaining to commit of $83,570. In Wilmer, we're to do 14 homes, 12 are in process. We have committed $164,918, and we have $45,000 to go yet. There is criteria that the homeowners have to meet in order to be eligible for a deferred loan. They have to be within the income guidelines by their household members, which is defined on the screen. They also must be current on their mortgage payments, their taxes, and their property insurance. So what homeowners can receive through the program is a deferred loan of up to $25,000. The amount the homeowner can get depends on their income level. The deferred loan pays for 70% to 100% of their total rehab project, and the remainder will come from the homeowner. If the homeowner stays in the house and owns the house for 10 years, the grant does not have to be forgiven. It doesn't have to be repaid, it is forgiven. If the homeowner moves or sells or otherwise transfers the property, then the entire grant must be repaid. On the next slide is showing the Raymond Residential Target Area, which is most of the community except for the newer housing on the southeast side. It includes the streets of Lake Street at the far north, 5th Street on the far east, Cofield on the south, and Mason Street on the west. Next slide shows the boundary areas for the Wilmer Residential Target Area, and this would include the homeowner and any renter-occupied housing. And it's Pacific Avenue on the north, 1st Street on the east, and it goes down to Wilmer Avenue, up 7th Street to the west on Candy O' High, and then north on 10th Street. Next slide shows criteria for renter-occupied rehab. We have currently four projects in process totaling $153,496,000 with 40, approximately $43,000 left to commit. Property owner and building eligibility requirements, 50% of the tenants in the building must be within income limit guidelines. The property owner must be current on mortgage payments, taxes, and property insurance. Must be located in the Wilmer Residential Target Area. And a minimum of 25% of the total rehab cost must be provided by the property owner. The type of funding that the property owner can receive through the Small Cities Grant is a deferred loan for up to 50% of the rehab expenses with a maximum of $8,000 per unit. The deferred loan is forgiven after 10 years, otherwise it must be repaid if the owner sells or transfers the property. With this activity, the HRA also has other assistance available to property owners, and these are 0% 10-year amortized loans with monthly payments for up to 25% of the rehab costs and a maximum of $4,000 per unit. The commercial activity, we have three projects in process totaling $88,000. There's also three additional applications pending, and we have $179,339 in funds to commit yet. Again, the property owner must be current on mortgage payments, taxes, and property insurance. Must be located in the Wilmer Business Target Area. And a minimum of 30% of the total rehab cost must be, must be provided by the property owner. This assistance is deferred loan up to 50% of the rehab expenses with a maximum of $30,000. If the deferred loan, if the owner sells or transfers the property within seven years, then the loan is repaid, otherwise it is forgiven. Again, the HRA has other assistance, 0% 10-year loans with monthly payments for up to 20% of the rehab costs and a maximum of $12,000. This slide is showing the Wilmer Commercial Target Area, which again is Pacific Avenue on the north, 1st Street on the east, Trot Avenue on the south, and 7th Street on the This program is implemented in accordance with fair housing requirements. This is federal money. It is illegal to discriminate against any person because of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, and national origin, and anyone who feels they have been discriminated. There is contact information there for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Next slide, for more information, Dale Slaughter and Sue Johnson, who are with us tonight in the audience, are our contact people at the HRA, and you can receive more information from them. And also applications, which we would like to receive more applications for all activities, rental, commercial, homeowner rehab. And thank you very much to the Department of DED. This is a very large grant for the city of Wilmer, and it was the largest funded application in this funding round, so we hope to do it justice.
Thank you again, very much. Are there any questions from the audience? Having heard none, I will close the public hearing and open up to the council. Do we have any, Councilman Ammon?
No, just a quick question. Jill, I came to talk the other day, I didn't know what the final numbers were. How many applicants have you got potentially for the downtown area for the commercial district?
How many applications? We've had, I want to say seven or eight? Six currently.
Six? Okay, thank you. And one other question, one of the discriminatory items there was blockbusting or blockbuster. What, could you explain what blockbuster means? That's a... Blockbusting is also illegal, it says. I don't know what that particular means, but just curious.
Do you know, I don't know either. I shouldn't say that, but I don't know.
Well, thank you for your honesty.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you very much. Are there any further questions for Jill? I might add that this is for information only. The, so there is nothing to vote on, but if you have questions or comments, please ask Jill at this point. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion on that, Kevin?
There's nothing to do, sir.
Nothing to do? With that, we will move into the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Is there anyone scheduled to speak?
I have Dana Hedberg signed up.
Dana?
My name is Dana Hedberg, and I live on 19th Avenue. I talked to Jim on Friday after I read the paper, and Jim thought it would be good if I just came and spoke. Live on 19th Avenue and just was looking to see what's going on with the realignment or the planning, or what, what's all the process, or what the future timeline, being a resident of that part of town, trying to figure out what's going to be going on.
What to do. I think, at this point, we'll probably turn it over to Bruce Peterson. He knows more about that than I do.
Actually, Sean Christensen, the Public Works, can do that. I think it's also an agenda item under the Public Works Agenda, so you could discuss it then, or you can, we can respond now, however you'd like.
Let's respond now, so that he has an answer.
Thank you, Mayor Yanish and members of council. That, at this point, is information and conceptual plan only. And the Dunick Corporation has brought in a plan that has, I'm sorry, a conceptual plan that has indicated where 19th could be extended to Lakeland Drive, which would parallel the 71 bypass, and 24th could be extended, 24th Avenue could be extended out to Lakeland. But as I mentioned before, at this time, it's, it's information and conceptual only.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
So going forward with that, is it the, is it the city planning that is going to be doing that, or is it Dunick Brothers that want to expand that, or is there going to be like a cost sharing? If there's anything involved with that, being that Dunicks kind of want to expand that to get into their development area?
I think...
Issue-type thing? Because, you know, if the, if there's cost sharing with that, it might be going further forward faster than...
Pay the full vote on that, or don't you know, Kevin?
Not in my jurisdiction.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. If I may, you will be discussing that in detail at the Public Works, Public Safety Minutes a little later, but that is completely Dunick's territory. They own Waterview Business Park, and any improvements done out there that we know of today would be by them, they'd have to pay for it. And they presented a nice overview of what they're looking for there, and it would help the city as far as transportation, but I don't believe that it would, it involves any citizen dollars presently.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any further, anyone further to speak?
No, sir. The only one signed up.
Thank you. We have a presentation to the mayor and the council chief officials. Would you introduce Mr. Comro? Did I say that right?
You did, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, and the council, tonight we have Tom Comro, who is the liaison for the Office of Minnesota Transportation for the TZD program. And TZD is an acronym for Towards Zero Death. It's kind of a spinoff in the early years, if you remember, supporting Safe and Sober. This graduated or is a child of that. It's based on the four Es, which is education, enforcement, engineering, and, can you help me out here?
Enforcement, engineering, education, and...
Emergency.
EMS.
Yeah, EMS. That's, that's the four Es that it's based upon. Tonight, he would like to present a item, it's known as a LIDAR, to the Wilmer Police Department, the city of Wilmer. The item is worth approximately $2,500, and it's used to assist... The item is worth approximately $2,500, and it's used to assist in the enforcement of speed. So, Mr. Cumro, if you would-
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Cumro.
Thank you. As the chief said, I am Tom Cumro, I'm a law enforcement liaison with Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety. That's kind of a long title, but in reality, what I am is I'm a retired cop who went to work for the state of Minnesota, and I'm kind of the go-between guy between local law enforcement agencies and the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety. As a majority of that responsibility, I work with TZD, as the chief said, towards zero deaths. Minnesota had, and also, as he said, used to be, we dealt with Safe and Sober, and Safe and Sober had strictly to do with law enforcement. The state, a few years ago, in their planning, decided, tried to figure out some goals and those kind of things, and it came, really came down to what should our goals be when it comes to traffic fatalities in Minnesota, and nobody there could put a number other than zero to it. If it's your family, if it's your neighbor, if it's somebody you work with, I don't think it's acceptable to lose anybody on our roads. And so that, for that reason, they put all the traffic safety programs in Minnesota under the TZD umbrella. And what I work with, with local agencies, is the TZD enforcement projects, and also a little bit with the safe roads. You have here in the Candy Ojai County area, you have a Safe Communities Group, which is funded under the Office of Traffic Safety, and law enforcement works very closely with them. They're, they get more into the education and the media, the outreach kind of things for this area. First of all, I got to congratulate the chief, I understand he is a short timer here, not going to be around very long. I have to tell you that I have enjoyed working with him since I, I was given this area, I used to have all of northern Minnesota, and a couple of years ago, the state added a person and gave me what's called Northwestern Minnesota. So you probably didn't think you lived in Northwestern Minnesota, but the state thinks you are. And so I have an area that's Thief River Falls, Detroit Lakes, and St. Cloud State Patrol Districts. My contact with the police department is Sergeant Julie Astmas, and I understand she's a short timer too.
She is.
About the same time as-
Just as short as I am.
Yeah, so I'm not sure what I'm going to do at the end of this month. Hopefully, you'll make a selection soon, so I can come and visit whoever you replace the chief with. And also, I have a connection with one of the officers here, Sergeant Dan Erickson, I worked with his dad at Fergus Falls Police Department, I think we worked together about 25 years, so I've had a little bit of a connection here. The Wilmer Police Department is involved with TZD enforcement through a grant that you guys have approved several times, I'm sure, with Candy Ojai County. That grant is a fairly large grant, because it covers geographically two counties, Swift County and Candy Ojai County, and covers almost all the law enforcement agencies in those two counties. One of the things that, if you have not heard of, to this point, you will in the future, and that's HVE, High Visibility Enforcement. The studies have been done, when I first started in law enforcement, it's been 40-some years ago, I felt pretty good about if I could take an unmarked car and a radar, and I could go sit in some inconspicuous spot where we had a speeding problem, and I would monitor speeders and write a few tickets in a day. And I thought I was doing pretty darn good. And my boss thought I could always write a few more, but that's beside the point. He, the problem being is, if I stopped five cars and wrote three tickets, I probably taught a lesson to a maximum of five people. And with my salary and all the equipment that goes with it, maybe that isn't money well spent. Now, if we have something called High Visibility Enforcement, where we tell everybody what the problem is, we already know what the problems are with traffic safety, and there's seatbelt usage, distracted driving, impaired drivers, and speed. And we, we make sure everybody knows that, and we'll tell everybody through the media that we're going to pay attention to a particular problem at a particular time of the year. It might be seatbelt usage, might be impaired drive, might be speed. Then what we'll ask law enforcement to do is, when they put squad cars on the street, we just don't put them out there willy-nilly and send them on their way, we ask them to work at least in pairs, and more if possible, maybe three squads, maybe four squads. We ask them to put up signs on the roadway, whether they're lighted ones that say entering speed enforcement zones, seatbelt enforcement zones, or maybe some diamond-shaped, like men-at-work-type signs. You'll be seeing those around the county, because after the 1st of October, that's going to be a requirement of the grant, that, that agencies use that. We want everybody to know what's happening out there. Then, as I'm driving down the road, and I see a sign, and I say to myself, oh yeah, that's right, they're, they've got the seatbelt thing going. And then down the road, I see a squad car, oh yeah, there, they just, they just wrote a guy for seatbelt. And a little ways down the road, I see another car, they just arrested somebody else, or wrote a citation for a seatbelt violation. When all reality, they may have been stopped for something completely different, but the perception is that if I drive with those types of driving behaviors, I then will be caught too. Now, I'm not just teaching a lesson to those squad, cars that get stopped by a squad, but everybody that hears it on, in the media, sees the sign, sees the squad car, gets the message that if I do those kind of things, I too could get a citation and be dealt with. So, you're going to be seeing that. After these mobilizations, I am afforded the opportunity to nominate an agency to get a piece of equipment, and when I was given that opportunity a while back, it was actually over the Christmas, New Year's time, I look at the activity that happens here in Wilmer, and I can tell you that you have a great police department here who has the right objectives in mind, and it has nothing to do with, I like to write tickets and I go out there and write tickets. I believe that the officers, and starting from the chief on down, is, the perception is, we want traffic safety, we want people's safety, that's number one, and to achieve that, yeah, enforcement's part of that. As I look at what they did, I nominated the Wilmer Police Department, I can tell you that sometimes those nominations sit somewhere for a while, and they got to check it out. I was emailed back that same day, said, we agree with you, absolutely. And so then I got ahold of Julie and the chief, and asked them what they could use, and they said they could use a LiDAR. And anybody know what a LiDAR is? I had it written down, so I knew how to say it, but it's Light Detection and Ranging, and it's also considered a laser. And back when I first started in law enforcement, we had radar, radar works on a Doppler system, which puts out a cone signal, and it, by the time it gets any distance from a squad car, it covers a big area. Then it's up to the officer to determine, if there's more than one car, which car is it that I'm getting a reading on? And they have training on, they're very good at it, but with traffic patterns today, I drove around your community here a little bit this afternoon, and before I came to meet, you've got some traffic here. And anytime you have traffic that involves more than one vehicle, it gets to be an issue when we send out a signal that's like that. And so, I believe the police department probably has one already, I'm not, I'm not real sure on that, but this is what a LiDAR is. The difference between a LiDAR and a radar, this has a sight, if any of you use a scope that's got a red dot in it, that's basically like this is, you look through the scope, you put the dot on front of the car, pull the trigger, and when you do that, it doesn't send out a signal and pick up a bunch of vehicles, it picks up one vehicle, and that is the one it gives you the, the speed of. It's a very expensive piece of equipment, as the chief said, it's, depending where the state bid comes in, between $2,500 and $3,000, in that range, and it's very specific to speed enforcement. A person has, you'll be sitting there and working traffic and detecting speed, and I want to present this to the police department if I can tonight. I appreciate what you do, chief.
Thank you.
I thank the city council, good traffic enforcement, a lot of things can, kind of a groundswell, can start from the bottom and work up. I can tell you that good enforcement, allowing law enforcement to do their job, needs to start at the top, need political permission from a body to say, yes, we believe in traffic safety, we believe in traffic enforcement. I think that's what's happened here, it comes down through the police department and down to their officers. So, I thank you for what you do, and we'll give you a LiDAR.
Thank you. I would like to make one clarification on a comment he made, I noted it raised eyebrows among the council members. When he talked about the red dot being projected out there, you will not see one on your chest or between your eyes or something like that. It actually does not project a red dot. It's inside the unit, the dot is just for aiming purposes. The reason we want to aim is this, this device is very precise, like within three feet at a great distance versus the Doppler radar, which is probably includes 75 feet or the whole lane width, and that is just for accuracy. So when we stop somebody, there's no contestation about, you got the person next to me or somebody else was speeding. So, you won't find a red dot on your chest, you won't see a, somebody in your car light up all of a sudden when we point the device at a vehicle, and there is no cancer or other radiation concerns with the device.
Thank you for that clarification, I didn't think about that, but that's true, the red dot is just in the machine itself, it is not projected. And I would ask the council at some point to pass a motion to accept equipment from the state of Minnesota and to put it into the inventory of the police department. Any questions at all?
I don't have any. Is there any from the council?
Thank you for the presentation, and just look forward to the, you know, the more of the Towards Zero Death Initiative.
Thank you.
I think it's something that we all support, and it's going to, should really make a difference with, with our roadways and how people drive on them, and it's, you say, it encompasses a lot of things beyond enforcement, you know, road design, and a lot of those issues as well, so.
I definitely believe that same philosophy, and I, and I'm very serious about it needing to come from the top down when it comes to good enforcement.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept the LiDAR unit as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made, and seconded to accept the LiDAR equipment as presented. Regular motion, now those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I have to let Chief Wifels know that we're very proud of you and your force for what you do and what you've done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Have a good night.
Labor Relations Committee report for April 23rd, Councilman Ammon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Item number one, item number two on the agenda was closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03. There was a motion made and seconded to go into closed session pursuant to 13D.03 to discuss labor negotiation strategies with Rice Hospital, and the meeting was closed at 4:12 PM. The meeting was reopened at 5:00 PM, and we went into, and at this point, the Finance Director, Planning and Development Director Bruce Peterson, City Clerk Kevin Halliday, Way Street Plant Superintendent Colleen Thompson, Recreation Supervisor Leanne Freeman, City Assessor Pat Erickson, and Administrative Assistant to Police Chief Sue Edwards joined the meeting and presented a Step 3 grievance. Pending litigation, Department Head, First Line Supervisors, and Confidential Employees Labor Contract Grievance. Mr. Oaklands and Mr. Peterson addressed the committee on behalf of the grievance, communicating the bases for the Department Head, First Line Supervisors, and Confidential Employees grievances. Mr. Baden addressed the committee on behalf of the city administrator and communicated the city administrator's position with respect to these grievances. Following discussions and some questions, I thanked the employees for their professionalism and courtesy, and presented and stated that the committee would review the matter. Item number four was closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.05 subdivision 3P, 3B pending litigation. There was motion made and seconded to go into closed session, again, pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.05 to discuss pending litigation, and the meeting was closed at 6:19 PM. Unless there's any, oh, I should further add that the meeting was reopened at 7:10 PM, and after that, there was a motion, there was also a question by Councilman Christensen, asked for the evaluation process for the city, for the city administrator, and Ms. Stevens stated that she had information that was given to me, and she was waiting to hear from me with a finalization for the process, and I think I conveyed to Ms. Stevens that the evaluation form that the county uses is just fine, so we'll proceed with that. Meeting was adjourned at 7:10, unless there's any questions, I move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the moments, the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for April 23rd, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no, that motion carries. We will move into the Finance Committee report for April 28th, 2014. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Second item on the agenda was public comments, and under public comments, Gary Gilman expressed his support for the proposed improvements to the auditorium, stating it is one of Wilmer's greatest assets. He also raised concerns about security issues, negligence, and why these improvements weren't done years ago. Donovan Kiel expressed his support for making improvements particularly to the gun range in the, in the auditorium. Christine Wenzel also stated the auditorium is an asset to the community, and as a community building, it needs to be reopened. Item number three, funding for additional costs for auditorium improvements. Staff explained that at the last city council meeting, the master plan for the city auditorium improvements was reviewed. At that time, council approved implementation of steps one, two, and referred three to the Finance Committee to discuss bid alternatives and potential funding sources. It was noted that $250,000 has been previously designated in the capital improvements program for indoor gun range improvements. An additional $340,000 will be needed to complete steps one through three. City Clerk Halliday presented the following options to us. Number one, use $250,000 from the $1 million self-insurance deductible reserve. Number two, seek general obligation bonding. Number three, use prior year capital appropriations that are no longer needed. And four, eliminate other 2014 capital improvement program projects. Five, determine if departmental expenditures may be less than anticipated. Six, determine if additional revenue may be received over the budgeted amounts. Number seven, designate the audited prior year surplus. And number eight, temporary funding from the Public Improvement Revolving Fund to be replenished through the budgeting process. Councilmember Fagerly asked about using local option sales tax funds for the project. It was noted that the local option sales tax program was closed, so the council could legally authorize uses other than what voters and the legislature approved. After considerable discussion, it was a consensus of the committee to direct staff to determine funds available from the self-insurance deductible reserve, the Public Improvements Revolving Fund, and for capital improvement projects that could be eliminated from the 2014 budget. Staff was also directed to encourage Engen and associates to apply, to apply for long-term and short-term funding options for the auditorium improvements. That was for information only. The next item was the Transit Joint Powers Agreement. Staff explained that the MinDOT Office of Transit has issued a directive that county and city transit services agencies are expected to combine programs in an effort to provide the most beneficial delivery of services. The Candy Ojai Area Transit Joint Powers Board and the Renville County Board of Commissioners have given preliminary approval to combine agencies. Staff and elected officials from both agencies have been meeting to draft new joint powers agreements, bylaws, and governing policies. The timeline for this new agency is set for an organizational, operational start January 1st, 2015. Most agreements, bylaws, and operational policies should be finalized by August of this year. Submission deadlines for the 2015 grant funding applications. This new transit service will be called Candy Ojai-Renville Transit, and will combine assets, bus titles for insurance purposes, and cash reserves. Existing employees will be hired by the new agency, with the CAT Transit Director taking the lead role, and the Renville County Transit Director being the Assistant Director. Attrition will be the only planned reduction in staff, if any. The estimated cost-sharing arrangements will be one-third each for the city of Wilmer, Candy Ojai County, and Renville County. Members of the new Candy Ojai-Renville Transit Board will include two Candy Ojai County Commissioners, two Wilmer City Council members, two Renville County Commissioners, and two elected officials from the remaining local units of government. The proposed joint powers agreement, which has been presented to the county attorneys, the Wilmer City Attorney, and the CAT Attorney for their review, will need to be ratified by both county boards and the Wilmer City Council. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce that motion to approve the concept of the proposed new Transit Joint Powers Board structure and agreement.
Second. A motion has been made-
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the concept of the proposed new Transit Joint Powers Board structure and agreement. Is there any discussion? Councilman Aman.
Uh, just a question, as far as the assets, the transfer of the city's assets into this new fund, does anybody know approximately how much, how much, how many assets there were? Most of these are funds that we've received from the state of Minnesota for operations.
That is correct, Councilmember Aman, members of the council. Hundred percent of the funding of the cash reserves pretty much came from MinDOT Office of Transit. The building is probably worth quarter of a million dollars will be transferred. CAT has thirteen buses, Renville County has seven buses. They will all be transferred, whatever that bus value is, I guess I don't know at this time. Cash reserves are probably in the neighborhood of a half million dollars right now for CAT to cover some of the operational funding that doesn't come until almost mid-year. I'm not certain what Renville County's is at this time, but all those will be listed in that joint powers agreement and some of those exhibit As and Bs at the end of it. Those further details will come back to the council.
One other question, Kevin, I know you've been on this, working with CAT for many years, I remember serving on it back in the mid-eighties on that board also, but as far as the funding sources going to the cities or the counties, every municipality has, can set up its own system upon request of the state, right, to have our own CAT system here in the city of Wilmer? But usually the counties also have to request that too, because I believe the county has not been in operation as long as the city of Wilmer, is that correct?
Uh, that would be correct. I'm not certain when the city of Wilmer, the Wilmer-Hartland Express began, it was here when Mr. Peterson and I came in in nineteen eighty-six and he was running it initially. And I think Renville County is, is called the Renville-Hartland Express, so, Renville County-Hartland Express, and that's been in about probably nineteen eighty-six, so they've been here a long time. But your earlier statement, it is not true, a city cannot ask to have its own system anymore. In fact, with a lack of willingness to combine efforts, I think the MinDOT's comment might be, you can have your own system if you want, the funding will be zero. Quite a motivator. So everybody across the state will start teaming up with various counties.
That was my next question. This is the sign of what's going to probably happen statewide as far as larger municipalities and counties joining operations for efficiencies, so this is really nothing too shocking, is it?
No, sir, that's, and I don't know the actual number, but if there's, you know, fifty transit systems in operation, I think their goal is cut that about in half.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion?
One question.
Go ahead.
Kevin, the building's owned by the CAT system, but they lease the land from the county.
Absolutely correct. I guess a different arrangement will be made with the county, it's for a dollar, I believe, and other sufficient considerations, so, and I believe the building in Renville County is owned by the county, not owned by its transit system, and they just rent. So everyone's got some peculiar scenarios that will have to be listed in that agreement, but all the buses and all their maintenance records have to be under one roof and, and the bus values are what they are, but it has to be owned by one group just to buy insurance on them, so. The reason the funding mechanism, if I may add, is near one-third each one. We have reviewed the hours of operation and the miles of operation that everybody runs. It is almost near perfection to be one-third from both counties and the city of Wilmer. So it's easier for our mechanism than to have a very long and complicated funding process.
As I understand it, Kevin, that this motion is to approve the concept, not the actual contract.
That is correct. We want the concept to be here initially so that the board makeup will not be questioned later on, and that's one of the bigger items. So at this point, we're going to be, two members, most likely the same members, will be put on at the reorganizational meeting in two thousand and fifteen here after the election.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Um, at that, after that discussion, I had to leave the meeting and Vice Chair Johnson took over chair duties. They reviewed reports, the committee received reports from the first quarter Rice Trust, first quarter investment activity, March thirty-first, two thousand fourteen investment listing, first quarter interest and dividends by institution, ten-year historical interest and dividends by quarter, and ten-year historical investment balances by quarter. That was for information only. Talking about future agendas, staff reported that the Finance Committee meeting scheduled for May twelfth will include a financial status report from Rice Memorial Hospital and discussion of the twenty fourteen B. street improvement financing. That was all the business that come before the committee, so unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Go ahead.
Question back on item number three. It's noted that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was set aside in the capital improvement program is for the indoor gun range improvements only. It was my understanding that that was, two hundred and fifty was set aside for the auditorium and the, and also the gun range. You looked up the, you look at the minutes from the December second council meeting, it says that the council reviewed the two thousand fourteen capital improvement program with staff and noted that the amount budgeted for the auditorium slash indoor gun range was increased to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars since the previous report, and that was what was passed by the council at that time. So I think your minutes should state that that there is for, capital improvements are for the auditorium slash indoor gun range.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, if I may. If you look into your capital improvements projects that were handed out to us, our original one stated indoor gun range, and the one updated November two thousand thirteen states indoor gun range, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This says nothing about the auditorium.
I'm saying if you look at the December second council minutes, it states auditorium slash gun range.
I believe at that meeting, whoever made that comment was referencing the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the capital improvement program, which clearly states where it was to go. And we all got a copy of that.
Councilman Anderson, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure in the grand scheme of things, we know we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars there, we know we've got roughly six hundred thousand dollars or in excess of that that we have to find money for. We have, we have ideas now as a result of that discussion where that, that money will come from, so I guess I'm not terribly concerned that this was dedicated for this and this was dedicated for that. It needs to be done, and I think we'll just put it in the pot and get it all done.
Councilman Aman.
I agree. I agree, it needs to get done, just like maintaining your house.
I, I agree too that we need to get the project done and get it, get it moving, but I know there's been, been a lot of discussion in the community that, you know, that that was only for the gun range, which is not true.
Explain to me what the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was for again?
Indoor gun range. Was auditorium slash indoor gun range.
Well.
Go ahead.
I, I know that there was discussion on that, and, and all I can say is when you look at the, the twenty fourteen capital improvement program, it's the gun range, it doesn't list the, the auditorium. I know there was discussion on that, but that, that's what it's, and that's just a placeholder. Again, I, I don't see a reason to be concerned about nomenclature at all. We're going to come up with the money, we have, we have ideas how to do it now.
Do you have any further comments?
No, I'm just, you know, that we're only talking gun range, I think there's things in that entire auditorium that are, need to be addressed, so, maybe semantics, but, and I know that the, the motion that was passed at the council meeting when they approved that budget was for auditorium slash gun range.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just maybe, we've asked the Engen to prepare that, I guess that question would be, can we do one without the other? Can we reopen the, I mean, with, with the condition of the auditorium? I'm not quite sure what the question is, what, you know, which one with that, I think we've agreed to look at all of them, but I guess as we look forward, what, what are we going to be able to do with that? So I don't know if staff have any comments about?
Would staff have the answer to that?
Well, I think Mr. Halliday's been working on this project, I mean, the council has given direction on the three phases, the three phases are, in a sense, ultimately tied together because the range is within the auditorium, and so both have to, you know, the issues of both have to be addressed for it to be a functional range in a functional auditorium. The, the projects are tied together.
Is there any first, second, or third to be done with the money? We have allotted?
The council's direction was to proceed with all three projects, and we are proceeding to have all of the bid specifications and design done for those three projects.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just curious, timeframe on the Finance Committee to deal with this issue as far as, is that coming up in a few weeks or?
Well, I think ultimately, Councilmember Aman, the discussion at the Finance Committee was, I mean, they gave us, we have direction now of where we can reallocate dollars, but until the bids are received, it's not necess, it would be a little bit premature to do that because again, the costs are only estimates, and rather than reallocate dollars and then find we've either reallocated too much or too little, the direction was essentially to proceed with the bid documents, have the bids returned, and then we will bring back that kind of full package for the council to act upon the bids that are received and then reallocate the dollars at that time, but we now have a direction of where we will be seeking those dollars to be relocated from.
And, and just curious, as far as the timeframe on the bid opening on those improvements, has Mr. Engen given any preliminary?
Mr. Halliday just forwarded a proposal to me today from Mr. Engen.
We have the proposal in hand, we do not have the construction timetable. His goal was to have that by Wednesday of this week. That will give you your answers, we now know the cost of the Engen Associates, but there's also a consultant for the abatement activity that we must hire that was in the report, and they are coordinating that consultant on our behalf, and that'll be a separate contract, so. We will proceed with those arrangements and, and put contracts together, or Mr. Engen, and get those underway?
I think actually, the contracts, but also the bid packages, they are separate bid packages, each item will be bid separately, I mean, the work, even though they are again connected, but there's different specialties at play, and so they will be bid separately, but they will be done at the same time. The bids will be sent.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Just one comment, you know, if we had to make the decision on finances and we weren't able to come up with the money, which I, I have a feeling we will be able to, but as far as priorities goes, I would think the first thing would be to get the, the leaks fixed and the gutters, number two, take care of the lead abatement, and after that, take care of the gun range. The air handling system and the remaining part of the auditorium, if it was cleaned, is still functioning. It's maybe a little outdated, but it still works, so there's some options for us to consider here, and I'm glad staff is coming up with some financial alternatives, we're going to have to make some tough decisions.
And they will be bid as separate packages, and there may be some alternates in that, that again, give the council some choices should, should you wish to have those choices, or again, should numbers be different than what we've estimated.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Just one more question, there's a sentence in here that says, staff was also directed to encourage Engen Associates to apply for long-term and short-term funding options for the auditorium improvements. Was that not almost like a bid that they, as to whether they could look for funding for us versus?
It would be a proposal, we would.
It would be a proposal, correct?
It would be a proposal from them for essentially professional services to assist in that grant writing or grant research, and we've asked them for that proposal as well, we have not yet received that proposal and what the cost would be for that.
So the minutes should probably be changed because we're, we're going to get, I mean, they're not just going to do this, we're going to be figuring out whether we can do this or not?
Well, actually, the update is, they will guide us in the direction, but they have to not be too involved with that.
Okay.
The Minnesota Historical Society doesn't look too favorable on your consultants that have a vested interest in the outcome, and they would by having contracts to fix a variety of things that we go on further with, say we got a two hundred thousand dollar grant for an elevator. So they're just going to give us a few guiding points and maybe some documents of what they did in the past, and city staff will pursue them on their own.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Councilmember Aman.
But just one other thought, during the process, we're looking for alternative funding sources and grants. Why, or maybe there's a reason why, but why aren't we using the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission? We have full-time staff writers down there all the time, we're on a full-time basis for the, for the county areas, are we going to utilize any of their resources or their?
That is a consideration we had. Initially, we thought that Engen and Associates would probably run with the whole ball of wax, but it's not the process that would be successful. And so with staff being involved, we also have the committee of Dale Johnson and Kelly Welch that have a wealth of information that is already gathered that they need, and I had anticipated walking downstairs and tapping on the members of the Mid-Minnesota Development Corporation for this. Thank you.
Councilman, member Nelson.
Thank you. One more question, the historical district that the downtown is working on, is the auditorium in that? Is that going to open up any opportunities for that?
Boy, can't make any comment on that, I don't know if anybody?
We, and if you refer back to the Engen proposal, we asked them to look at historic tax credits and, and those alternatives, and that was in there, they did not feel that that was the most viable alternative for funding, but we can, you know, we did look at that, we may look at it again, but it was looked at, determined if historical tax credits could be used. Thanks.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, go ahead.
Well, I still go back to the, the way the minutes are worded, that that does not follow the intent of the council, I think we should, the intent of our December second, when that funding was approved, the intent was that be auditorium and gun range.
I'm not clear on what you're asking us, or what you're asking the council.
That the sentence in there where it says it's noted that the two hundred and fifty thousand has previously been designated in the capital improvement program for the indoor gun range improvements. I'm saying that was approved for the auditorium slash gun range.
And Chairman of our Finance Committee says that there really isn't an issue with that.
Well, all I can do is go look at the capital improvement plan, and it's, it's listed as a gun range, and that's, that's what it says. Now, I know there was discussion that we didn't want to limit things to just the gun range, but that's what it says, and that, that is what it says. Again, I'm not concerned about it. We're going to do the whole package, the council has already said we're going to do one, two, and three, so the money will get spent, and if, you know, I.
Mary Annish?
Go ahead.
Would it be possible to ask staff just to go back to review the minutes to see if there should be a correction? I don't know, I know we had discussions many times with that. I think one of the concerns that I have is I've seen things out on, on Facebook where council members are making comments and there are things out there, so I think that, to me, the concern would be that we've agreed to one, two, and three, but if our minutes are incorrect, maybe we could just ask staff to go back and review. I know that December meeting that you're referring to.
December second meeting, yeah.
And I believe that it was changed with the slash in it, but I don't know that it makes a difference at this point in time, but I do, am concerned about some of the communication that is going on in the community that is planting different kinds of seeds than I think what the, what the council's trying to accomplish, so is that something we could just ask and be reported at the next meeting?
Councilmember Anderson, do you feel that Councilmember Nelson's request is out of line or?
I, I know she has said many times, don't limit things to just the gun range, it's the auditorium as a whole. the auditorium as a whole." Um, so, I, I don't know, but I'm sitting here looking at the 2014 capital improvement and it says indoor gun range. I mean, that's how it's listed.
I don't know that it matters. Excuse me, Mayor Yanis, is it okay if I speak? I don't know that it matters to this, but I think it does matter to the community because there is a lot of information out there that is being shared and I am concerned about some of the things that are out there that are not accurate with what's in the reports, that are not accurate with that. And if it's a clarification, if it comes back that that's the way it is, then fine, let's clarify it. But, when you're seeing, um, information on Facebook that has councilmembers' names attached to it, um, about this has been confirmed, those types of things, I do have a concern about, um, the message that we're sending to the community. So, I think we've agreed to do steps one, two, and three. That should not stop us, but I think perhaps we need to, it would be good to put that under arrest.
If we get clarification on that, would that satisfy you, councilman?
That would be fine.
Can we do that? Get clarification on that?
Review the-
And go ahead and change the minutes if other minutes ask us to put city auditorium ahead of the word gun range. Just make the correction.
Correct.
We can certainly research the minutes and determine what was done.
I'm not even asking for the correction. I just would like to see, you know, I, because I actually did look at the, what the minutes said on December 6th with that. So, um, with that, I, you know, it's just a point of clarification. So, there might just be a,
December 6th.
Just clarify it. We've agreed to go forward and that's what we're doing. So, but I, I do think some of the conversation in the community needs to, needs to be aware that, and, and I guess I'd go back to staff to say, "Can we do one without the other?" And I think that will come forward with the, with those proposals. So, we can, we can wait and see, but-
I would direct the, uh, the staff to, uh, if they can, to find the, what was the date on that? December 2nd?
I'm looking at the December 2nd meeting minutes.
If they would look at the December 2nd minutes and, uh, and see how clearly that was stated.
Certainly.
Thank you.
If you also, um, review the audio from that meeting. It is clear in the audio that it was auditorium slash gun range.
Well, let's clarify.
Councilmember Johnson?
I was just going to comment that, and I think, uh, Councilmember DeBleek clarified it. It's the audio, the taped recording of that meeting that I think would, I assume that's what Councilmember Nelson's talking about. Have somebody listen to it and just see what it says.
The minutes itself, um, Mr. DeB-
The recorded, the recording.
We can do that. We can listen to the audio and make sure that our minutes are correct.
The minutes of our meetings aren't always exactly what was said, but that doesn't mean that there was an agreement and-
The audio is there too.
Yeah.
But, and, and just, I think we got to find a way to be positive about this and move forward.
Yeah, but if there is some question, that's the way to resolve it. I agree with you.
I believe you're, you're correct, but I, I think-
I don't know what it says.
Doing this will help to resolve some things that are being said in the community.
I think there's the minutes, there's audio, and there's probably even video, so we can go back and look at those, so.
Councilmember Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I brought it up a number of times now in the last six months. State auditor tells us very clearly in chapter 27 of meeting minutes that they need to be documented, written down. What are we doing? Why are we doing it? The dollars that are immediately talked about being spent and then the sustainability dollars to keep the project going. Just as soon as we, uh, get accurate committee meeting minutes, we wouldn't have to have these long discussions because we could just go to the minutes and say, and review what the minutes state that we agreed to. Until that is resolved, we're going to continue to have these conversations that don't get us anywhere.
I think that's what our plan is.
I think that's what we're talking about, our minutes. I think the minutes from that December 2nd council meeting were clear. It's just the statement in this finance committee meeting that, um, is not totally accurate and a, and a staff will review that and could make the changes to the minutes.
We will find out. Councilmember Fagerly, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You got to remember why we were talking about the auditorium because it was closed down in August. So, we wanted to get it corrected in a hurry and then we hired Ingean and Associates to do an overall study and that's where all these other deficiencies came. So, now we're going to do one, two, and three at $600,000. That's all that should matter. It shouldn't matter what was said back in December.
Well, as Councilmember Dacken stated, clear and accurate minutes, so. Guess, Mr. Mayor, you have a, a motion on the table to file?
We do have a motion on the-
Call the question.
On the table to file the minutes of the finance committee. Uh, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we will, uh, go to the Public Works Safety Committee report for April 29th. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first issue had to do with the Waterview Business Park, um, which is for information only, and I would ask, is there an overhead of that, uh, that we can view? There is no overhead so the public can see. There's one in our minutes, I know, and, uh, well, I'll continue. Uh, Mr. Jason Vandersteg of Dunick Incorporated was at our meeting and he presented the proposed Waterview Business Park Phase Two. The project will consist of extending 24th Avenue to connect with Lakeland Drive Southeast and relocating a portion of 19th Avenue. Possible benefits of the project were discussed with the committee. Project funding is yet to be determined. Some questions were raised, uh, from the committee regarding stormwater issues and, uh, Dunick said that they would work with the Army Corps of Engineers and staff regarding any city ordinances and MPCA requirements. Uh, maybe the, uh, website could have that view so people could see what they're intending to do. Um, somebody could see to that. I really hoped and thought we would have it on the screen tonight.
It's in the minutes.
It's a major-
It's on the website.
It's a major improvement to the Waterview Business Park. Really doesn't show what we're looking for there, but, um, Dennis passed me and said it was in the paper, the picture, the picture of it was in the paper. So, uh, um, you may be able to go see that. If you look at the paper, the last few days, whenever it was in there. Some people get it, some don't. The paper, I mean. Um, item number four, uh, our second issue had to do with the Minwest Lift Station bid award. This is a resolution. Requires a wall roll call. Once again, staff presented a recommendation to award the contract to Dunick in the amount of $2,421,172.50 for the Minwest Lift Station slash Lakeland Drive Sewer Project. It had a base bid of $2.297 million, including alternate A, which was $43,342 and alternate B, which was $80,552. That adds 1,267 feet of cured and placed concrete, CIPP, and five manhole reapalitations. The award is contingent upon, uh, MPCA approval. However, it was noted that the comment period has passed, so the approval should be in place shortly. The, after some discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will make the, introduce the resolution that the contract be awarded for the Minwest Lift Station slash Lakeland Drive Sewer Project to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $2,421,172.50, that being contingent upon the MPCA approval.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to award the contract to Dunick Incorporated in the amount of, for the Minwest Lift Station and Lakeland Drive Sewer Project in the amount of $2,421,172.50 with the contingency. List the contingency again for me.
The contingency is upon approval by the MPCA, Minnesota Pollution Control Association.
And that is the resolution. All those, uh, we will have a resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
Our next item had to do with the crack seal bid award. This is also a resolution. Staff once again presented a recommendation to award the contract for the 2014 crack sealing project number 1406 to, uh, Gledon Enterprises LLC in the amount of $33,500 and authorized the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Uh, committee briefly discussed using any additional monies from the Public Works budget for crack seal repair on additional streets. Staff will be researching the possibilities for that option. The remainder of the budget is to be used for seal coating and pavement marking. I will introduce that resolution to award the contract to Gledon Enterprises LEC, LC in the amount of, uh, $33,500.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to award the contract for the 2014 crack sealing project number 1406 to, to Gledon Enterprises LLC in the amount of $33,500 and authorize the signatures in the 2014 crack seal contract. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that passes.
Our next item had to do with, uh, private archery range requests. This is a motion. Uh, we had four requests from, uh, citizens of Wilmer shooting, uh, archers that, uh, want their permit applications approved and allow for construction and use of private arch, the private archery range designs as illustrated on the applications. Uh, the permits were reviewed by Chief Wifels and approved for one, Mr. Dan O'Meara, located at 1609 College Park Circle, a Bruce DeBleek located at 27th Street Northwest, Gary Gilman located at 534th Street Northwest, and for Mr. Michael Gardner located at 1401 16th Street Southwest. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will, uh, move the motion to approve those four archery ranges as requested.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the, uh, permanent applications for the archery ranges as requested. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Is there any discussion, first of all? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm abstaining.
That's right. You are abstaining. Please note that.
Yes, sir.
Our next item was old business. Um, our fire chief, Mr. Gary Hendrickson, was there and he noted that there have been 90 fire calls so far for this year and highlighted the, that May 4th through the 10th is arson awareness week. Our police of chief, uh, Mr. Wifels, is also there and he, uh, gave us the jail census for that day, April 29th, which was '79, and that calls for service for the previous two weeks had totaled 587. Our next item was, uh, new biz, under new business was project number 1407 brought to us by Sean Christensen, our engineer. This is a resolution, requires a roll call. Uh, staff presented a recommendation to approve plans and specs for the 2014 street lighting project number 1407, which is along Wilmer Avenue Southwest from County Road 5 to 22nd Street Southwest. As presented and authorized, signatures and call for advertising for bids to be opened on June 3rd, 2014. The project includes the installation of 13 steel pole breakaway streetlights. After some discussion, a motion was made and seconded for the pass and I will move the resolution to authorize signatures and call for the advertisement for bids.
Second.
A motion was made and seconded to approve the call for bids on the project number 1407 street lighting, which is the specifications and call for bridge, uh, bids on street lighting as presented and call for advertisement for bids to be opened June 3rd, 2014. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
That concluded our meeting. Unless there are some questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for April 29th, 2014. Any discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, it's okay. I would like to go back to, um, Waterview Business Park one more time because I, I've been getting some questions about that also and I just wondered if Dunick's do go, want to go forward with this, what is the process? How will the commu, how ma, how will the area be involved? I, will go back to the planning commission? Will it go to, um, if I remember correctly, there was a thought that someday it would connect down 28th Street and so I'm just curious about that area and how that will move forward and what, how the community, the residents there will be in, involved.
Councilmember Nelson, I'll answer to the best of my ability. Yes, you're correct. There was a long-term plan for the extension of Lakeland Drive to the southeast or to the southwest paralleling the bypass. 24th Avenue appears to be at this point a better choice. There are some wetland issues encountered if you try to take it all the way down to 28th Avenue. Um, again, these are things that would have to be looked at in, as staff reviews the concept. It's important to remember that right now, this is just a concept that we're going to be looking at. With the, um, ability for neighborhood involvement, anything like that will require a plat. It will require formal dedication from the developer to the city. So, the, uh, neighborhood, the persons that are deemed to be affected property owners by statute would be notified of public hearings in front of the planning commission and all those plat actions do also come back through the council. So, there is opportunity for citizen involvement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, do we have a motion on the table?
Yes, sir.
And a second?
And a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, so, those that are opposed say no. That motion carries. Community development report committee, uh, for May 1st, 2014. Mr. Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on, um, May Day, Thursday, May 1st. Um, meeting was called order at 4:45. Item number two is public comments. There was no one to speak to us. Item three was reviewing the, uh, boundaries for the tax increment, uh, district and financing and we dealt with that earlier with the, uh, public hearings. Item four, Economic Development Commission update. Steve Rehnquist, Director of the City of Wilmer and Kendrae County Economic Development Commission, presented information to the committee regarding Economic Development Commission activities. And we have the attachments there. Um, the documents presented to the committee consist of the following: goals and strategies related to economic development activities, current projects, estimate of return on investment for EDC budget expenditures, and recommendations for EDC priorities. Uh, Mr. Rehnquist concluded his presentation by offering some developmental, uh, statistics related to the EDC, uh, programs and he did a very good job. And I see he is in the audience if anyone has any questions or if he would like to speak. I'll allow that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, uh, thank you so much for the city's, uh, support and cooperation of all the EDC activities in years past. Uh, we're a growing community. We're a strong community. We're, uh, very strong evidence that we're this, we are the strongest rural regional center in the state of Minnesota and one of the strongest in the, uh, five-state areas outside of the North Dakota Energy Expansion Area. So, any questions, Mr. Mayor? I stand ready to respond.
Does the council have any questions to the committee meeting?
Thank you then. Item five, uh, old business, solid waste ordinance. Councilman Johnson expressed concern about the new solid waste ordinance, specifically that there was inadequate enforcement. Staff reminded the committee that the ordinance was to be a complaint-driven process and that there had been very few complaints received lately. Uh, the staff is still adjusting to the new ordinance and working with the police department who is preparing the forms for the administrative citations. Uh, one suggestion from staff was that- One suggestion from staff was that there be an enforcement beat, that a staff person could walk weekly in the central business district to take a more proactive approach. The committee discussed the task force process and ordinance, but was not in agreement on issues of enforcement. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded and passed to direct the city administrator to draft a policy for aggressive enforcement of the new solid waste ordinance. Now introduce that motion.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded for the city administrator to draft a policy to enforce the ordinance of the...
The solid waste.
Solid waste.
Ordinance, yep. So our concern was, I mean, it is a new, new ordinance, but there was some disagreement between staff and some of the council. Staff thought it was a complaint basis. The committee thought...
It was a done deal, so to speak.
Yes, the public or the service officers that are downtown checking parking violations, they should be doing both, and if they see a violation, they could write...
Does this take a roll call or a motion?
No motion.
Does not take a roll call.
But staff did state that the administrator was working on a policy, so it's just direction that we're...
Is there any further discussion?
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Anderson was first.
I remember the discussion at the council level where the question was asked how we were going to implement this and enforce this, and it was, my recollection is it was on a complaint basis. And that's pretty much the way that we handle all of those sorts of things, I thought, was on a, was on a complaint basis. Now, if we want to get aggressive, that's fine, but I don't think, that was not what I, the way I understood it when it was presented to us. So I'm just a little confused as to what, what way we want to enforce this.
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I was just going to ask for a staff comment because I believe that we were informed that the police chief was working on a form and that we actually hadn't started using yet, and Administrator Stevens wasn't there, and so I'm just curious with where we're at and what the plans are. And then, you know, it's fine if we want to go to enforcement, but are we willing to put the dollars there to increase staffing to enforce, or what is the plan going to be?
Aye. I see Mr. Peterson is, has his hands are raising, you know, so, yes, Mr. Peterson.
The issue of enforcement was discussed quite a bit. We've had a discussion at the staff level the end of last week with the city administrator, and we're going to pull the task force back together for one more meeting to make sure that we're clear what their direction was. The enforcement's really going to be multifaceted. We will get complaints. Staff will see them when we're out in the field. We will have the CSOs noting them on their rounds and notifying staff so we can follow up with the proper correspondence to the property owners. You know, by and large, the process, I think, has to be complaint-driven for the simple reason that we don't have the staff to put out in the field to do full-time inspections of neighborhoods and the central business district. If it turns out that we've got a problem that's much larger than we anticipate, then that's something that we're going to have to consider at the staff level and at the council level. But for right now, I think that the process that we are hoping to put in place in the very near future, using the police department, CSOs, with the ability for them to issue citations to persons that are not in compliance after they've been given their compliance period to correct the deficiency, you know, we have every expectation that it's going to work. Again, I, I'll offer an apology for the length of time it's taken to roll this new process out. We are still finding our way with the new ordinance, and we have every reason to believe that it will be successful, but we just have to make the public educated so that they know that they can call us with a complaint, and it will be addressed very quickly. Being addressed quickly from the staff standpoint doesn't mean it's going to disappear in 24 or 48 hours because we have to give the property owner reasonable time to comply. It's the repeat offenders and the persons that don't comply with our initial notices are the ones that are going to get the $50 citations. And I believe once there are several of those issued, the word will get out and we'll see much better compliance.
Thank you.
By virtue of the fact that people know that there is a stick being held.
Does that answer your question?
Just one additional one, the police chief, the CSOs report to you, how many hours a week, or what do we have for that right now? Because I know that's been a question in the community too of what do they actually do and how many hours a week do we have them working?
It depends upon the, I guess it is, it depends upon the CSO and the time of the year. For instance, in two weeks, we will lose three of our four CSOs for 10 weeks and won't have their availability at all. They will be attending skills course in Alexandria as part of their law enforcement training, which they attend out at the college, so we'll be down to one. We also, they're part-time employees, so we limit their hours normally through the school year to 20 hours a week to allow them adequate time to get good grades for their studies and not burden them with work or be focused just on work. We believe the academic portion of their law enforcement career is more important. Through the summer hours, we normally ramp that up to just under full-time, 38 hours a week is where we try to hold them at, and we use them for sunshine and all the other events that we have going on through the summer. Specifically, they have not been yet directed to simply patrol the downtown area and police for garbage and write tickets on that. I mean, they weren't looking for somebody that dropped a box outside the back door and tossed a ticket at them or anything like that. So there's going to be a learning curve there too if you expect the CSOs to look for garbage, identify the person who put it there, and then issue a citation as this group would like done.
It's not addressed for just the downtown area though, correct? The ordinance is not citywide?
It is citywide.
It is citywide.
Citywide.
Yeah.
The reasons the CSOs came into play, I think, I think if you get out of the downtown area, which they patrol doing downtown, that's where you're going to see them on foot. To address the citywide, I would say you're going to be disappointed if you don't think those complaints, or if those complaints will come from the CSOs and be handled by them. I think that has to be complaint-driven. Who knows better than the person living next to you whether or not there's a garbage issue in the backyard? I don't think we want to send our CSOs walking around everybody's backyard to see if there's a garbage complaint or a potential garbage complaint. So the downtown area would be what's most visible to the public and probably the most offensive right now that we want to address.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't disagree with staff's comments here, but I think we do have a problem community-wide with people that don't, a lot of people not maintaining properties. I think the park report indicated that the, if I recall the numbers correctly, the average, statewide average for homeownership was 72% of the housing. In Wilmer, it's, it's either 60 or the low 60s, indicating we have a higher degree or a higher amount of rental property, a larger percentage. That's probably where a lot of our problems come from. When this was discussed at the community development meeting, I pointed out that I had read two articles in the Minneapolis Tribune the past week. One dated, appeared on the 27th of April, the other on the 28th. The first one was, talked about a couple of communities, Roseville and Burnsville, that have decided to crack down on these problems, and Roseville, for example, was starting to inspect apartments. And the reason for that was they were getting complaints from social workers that visited those apartments and telling them that they didn't even want to go inside. That's how bad they were. And in Burnsville, they're concerned about, they were also, not only their apartments, but also the overall objective is curb appeal. You know, they want their community to look nice, and they want things to stay fresh, and they want to avert decay. Second article talked about the problem with street work and the cost to property owners in Minneapolis. They're way, they're like the city of Wilmer, we're way behind on our street repairs. We've got major problems with buildings, the auditorium we've been discussing. We've also got the civic center out here that's in need of, last estimate I saw of on the capital improvements was $1 million. I think it's going to be closer to $2 million. Kevin Mattson estimated it for the community education and rec board that it was 1.6 million the last time that he addressed it or spoke about it at a meeting I attended. And the problem they're having in Minneapolis is they're finding that in around some of the suburbs, that when they go to assess for street repairs, they can't collect all those assessments. The courts have ruled, people have contested them, and requirement for street assessments, as I'm sure Mr. Halliday can verify, that when you assess somebody for a street improvement, you can only assess the amount that it adds value to their property. So if you want to assess somebody, say, for example, $8,000 for street improvements, and you only enhance or increase the value of their property by 2,000, you can only collect 2,000. That's assessment law. And they're having problems in Minneapolis with that. So if we want to do this on a complaint basis, and a lot of people are afraid to complain about their neighbors, I think, I don't think we're going to improve the conditions in the city with how property is maintained, and I think it's going to lower property values. To me, that's a problem. So I think it, doing it on a complaint basis, you're not going to improve the living quality of this community. Because we face some of the same problems these larger cities do, just because we are much smaller and we're outstate Minnesota or rural, or whatever you want to, however you want to refer to it, we got the same problems. And how we're going to address them, I think, you know, whether we want to or not, I think we, I think we need to, and I think we need to be aggressive in the enforcement of these ordinances. Otherwise, why pass them? That's my position.
Thank you. Chief, I have a question for you. How have the other complaint basis projects worked? I mean, I know that we have a towing complaint basis only.
They work just fine. I think the towing complaint basis you're referring to is the 48-hour parking or trailers that have been parked over an extended period of time, or snow removal in the wintertime. The snow removal is not normally a complaint basis. That's something that we can readily identify after a snowfall as to how long a vehicle may have sat there, if the snowplow's gone around it. We, we know when these actions occur. We take pictures of vehicles that don't move, and then we come back and put a notice on there first, then, then ticket, and then eventually tow. It's the, more in the summer months and the fall that we don't know how long a vehicle has been parked on the street, or the fact that maybe somebody's pontoon has been unhooked from a truck or a vehicle that tows it and has been sitting on the curbside for two weeks, a month, or whatever. We strictly rely on neighbors to complain. Our thought process on that is, first of all, is difficult to, we don't have the manpower to simply watch every vehicle or know where every vehicle is in town, how long it's sat there. And the second thing is if, if it doesn't bother the neighbors, I don't believe that that's something we need to be using our time on when there's so many other things that do bother the neighbors that they would like us to address. Barking dogs is another one that's complaint-driven. We don't drive around and listen for a barking dog in town. We wait until somebody calls and complains. The same with running at large, or cats in the backyard in the sandbox, or an animal down in your window, well.
Thank you. Councilmember? Go ahead, Councilmember Nelson.
I just wanted to clarify with Councilmember Johnson, if he wants to continue with the motion or if the suggestion that Mr. Peterson made to get the task force back together to come up with a plan, what would be the best way to proceed?
Well, it's been, motion's been made and seconded. I would think it compels a vote.
Okay.
Councilmember, Councilmember, Councilmember Christiansen, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think the motion is in order. I mean, we, we passed an ordinance for the, for the new solid waste ordinance, and as far as additional people looking or to enforce this, you know, we have ears and eyes on the street every day in the city. We have public works people driving up and down the streets. We got the CSOs, we got the police department, we got our own staff that go out and deliver. We have an inspection department that goes to every corner of the city. They inspect all the apartments. They have to be inspected annually, and some of them, two years, some of them four years, depending on how large they are. So I think we have the ears and the eyes out there. We just need to utilize them. They're out there, even as council people. I mean, Councilman Johnson has been taking pictures and sending them to City Hall. That's the proper thing to do. It's documented, and if it's by complaint, well, he's complaining. It's behind where he used to have his office. We've got the people out there, and we're all over the city of Wilmer. I mean, I ride bike all over my ward, and if I see something out of line or something, I call the City Hall, or I send them a note or an email. I called the police department many times. So we have the ears and the eyes. It doesn't take additional staff to do what, what this motion is looking at. I mean, it's strictly to have the administrator draft a policy for aggressive enforcement by using our eyes and ears and the city employees' eyes and ears. That's, that's it, and I think it's in order and proper.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I know we talked the other night about some groups, the downtown groups, maybe there's some other groups that can be involved with them. I just think we, we have more things than just the, I mean, between the rental and those things, I, you know, I guess I'll see what we come back with, but there's probably a lot of things that need to, need enforcement.
I have one. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Does, does this motion then preclude the staff from bringing the solid waste task work back together? For some clarification, or can they still do that? Because that seems to make sense to me.
Is that a question to staff?
I don't know that, I don't know why it would be precluded. I mean, I don't know why we would maybe not try to get some additional input and see if the direction that we've just proposed is a, is a direction they think is good, or they might have some suggestions, some other suggestions as well. I mean, I don't think it precludes it.
I just didn't want to eliminate that option. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
We're all sitting here talking out loud, and all good points. And Tim, thanks for doing your, Mr. Johnson, thank you for doing your homework. It was good to, I'll have to read those articles later, but very valid point. We have Rack Aid, just as another thought throughout here. Ron, you mentioned the eyes and ears of all the people here, the eyes of the community. Maybe just a little reminder in Rack Aid to say, tired of looking at it? Call it in, clean it up. They have a right to complain. A lot of people are afraid to talk to their neighbors over, over the fence, over a cold soda or something in the summertime, fear, and everybody living inside their environment and their homes. You know, if they don't want to confront them, just call City Hall. And, you know, we could put that on Rack Aid very easily, and maybe sometimes there is something on there, but they have a right to complain as taxpayers, or as a renter. They have the right to complain against a person who's not taking care of their home if they're a homeowner. So it works both ways. So we want to clean up the community. Just a suggestion, if anybody's on Rack Aid Committee.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
Put it on there in big, bold letters.
I think that's a good suggestion, Councilmember Ramon. We can certainly look at that as well.
Just a thought, had to get it off my chest. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion.
Do we, we have a motion on the table, right? In a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Thank you.
The next item was the building status reports. Staff talked about the rural tire building, the Erickson Building, and Habitat for Humanity on 7th Street. The rural tire building, I think you've got some bids or quotes for demolition. It was anywhere from 40,000 to 120,000. The Habitat for Humanity House, they haven't closed yet on it. FHA is holding it up, so, and they're getting bids on demolition on that. And I don't remember on the Erickson Building. Councilperson Nelson said she thought there was some construction going on there because it looked like some new Ty-Vac or something, but can you explain to the council on that one?
Information that staff has on the Erickson Building is that we have issued a permit for demolition. We have seen some product come out...
We have seen some product come out of this building. We've seen some evidence of some interior demolition. We are not seeing a lot of progress. The person has six months to demonstrate significant progress on the demolition, or else the city will have to take the next step, which would be to go to court and get the order for the demolition.
All right, thank you.
Can I interrupt for just a moment? And I want to say that on the Erickson Building, there seems to have been some progress made in the back of the building. Have you seen that, Bruce? What is that about?
As near as we can tell on the back of the building, they've removed some of their electrical panels, they've done some of the electric demo inside, but we can't really tell to what extent we have not been in the building. Don't really have a good reason to request access at this point. They just have to keep demonstrating progress with the demolition.
Thank you.
Item number six, new business, Wilmer Industrial Park Third Edition Platte. Staff informed the committee that the city had recently been informed that an error had been made in the preparation of the Wilmer Industrial Park Third Edition Platte. One lot dimension was shown inaccurately on the platte, but the error has been corrected, and it is necessary to file a surveyor's certificate of platte correction. And this document has been drafted by Bonama Surveys, who prepared the original platte, and they'll be making all expenses for recording. A motion was made and seconded and passed that the surveyor's certificate of platte correction be approved, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the certificate. I'll make that motion.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded for the mayor and the city clerk to, how do I say that?
Sign the...
Execute the certificate.
Execute the certificate of...
Correction.
Certificate. Certificate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
And if there's no other questions, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the moments, the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for May 1st, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Is there, oh, the consideration of the resolution designation polling places for 2014 elections. Kevin, do you want to take care of that, please?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council. The election process is beginning. It starts tonight with the declaration of our designated locations for our 12 polling locations, three for each ward in the city of Wilmer. You have before you a list that looks quite familiar, but I would like to point out that Ward 1, Precinct 3, used to be Ridgewater College, and it is being moved to the Word of Faith Family Church at 3,010 Seventh Avenue Northwest. Subsequent to the adoption of these polling locations, that one with a change will have postcards mailed to the registered voters, letting them know their location has been switched. Ridgewater College is in a large remodeling project, and there's no room for us. It is staff's recommendation that we approve the resolution with the 12 locations as listed.
Move to approve. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution to approve the designated locations as listed. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just a question on the Ridgewater College location. Be able to have a sign or a placard out there to, on Election Day, which points the people that may not get the postcard, or may not know, to go to the Word of Faith Church?
Well, that's a good point. We were certainly going to put a polling sign at the Word of Faith Church, so as they drive north on County Road 5, they would see it and maybe turn around. We'll have to maybe make a sign that says, "This is not a polling location." I don't know. We'll try to do something.
I don't know if that can be, if there's a way to address that, to anybody...
We'll try to get that, it will be on our website. When people start looking, we'll advertise and we'll post. We'll try to get the word out, but there will be some who are creatures of habit.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, I know it.
We have a roll call to do. Would we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Is there any old business? Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
Just curious if staff could update me on the, the needs, or any, if there has been any action on some of the comments that were made about the gun range, about the cockroaches down there. Just wondering, you know, I've heard rumors that there's, there's a gang war going on, and they're all packing down there, so.
We have, we have...
I'm curious if you've gotten any, anything done there. We should do that before they start doing the abatement.
Yeah, we have dealt with that problem previously, actually, on our own building in City Hall. I mean, it's somewhat of a function of the disc buildings, they have district heat and such, so we have dealt with that before. We will be using kind of the same extermination process with the auditorium.
Okay, good, good. I've, I've had more questions than that than a lot of other things lately there, and I thought that was kind of curious. All right, thank you very much. Also, one other thing, it might be underneath old business, the city administrator's review, if that should be new business or not. Mr. Mayor, your discretion as far as setting a time date?
Let's set a time date.
Okay. Under new business?
New business.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any further old business? Okay, let's go into new business. Councilman Amon, do you have?
Well, two things. One was on curiosity on Rack Eight. I think Mr. Councilman, former Councilman Doug Reese was on the Rack Eight Board for many years, and had sat on that with a group of people. Is that still operational? And who is the representative now for the councilperson on Rack Eight? Is that...
I don't know that we have a councilperson doing it.
Well, we do.
Okay. I haven't heard any report. I just, curiosity, meetings, or what's been going on there, but...
Councilmember Christiansen?
I'm sorry, but it's no longer in my world, so I can't give you an update. Rack Eight is under IT.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting of that board. I don't know that the one was even held in the last year, or the last, my tenure here, I don't know that the one has been held, but we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have an update there. I, I know that there's a great amount, you know, as far as the financial end of it, the needs, the usage, maybe, maybe we can get some quick numbers, just kind of inform the public and ourselves of, as far as the efficiencies, and how well that fund is, fund is being used, and whether or not their needs are being met at Rack Eight from Rody. I'm, I'm not sure what their long-term goals or objectives are, but that was one of those things I had in back of my gunny sack, I wanted to ask. Thank you. The other thing was, as far as a date, that we can get the councilpeople together for the city administrator review, and I was wondering if next week, the, if the 14th of work with Charlene and the council...
I'm not available on the 14th, I'm out of town.
You're not available on the 14th? Well, that, that answers that. How about the following week? Would that work on a Wednesday? I think Wednesday is the preferred day for labor, if that's possible. That would be the 21st?
I think that would be up to the city administrator, whether she has the time to do that.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to reach a consensus, if we can do it now or rather than later, if it's possible.
Yeah, everyone together.
Okay.
Just, just a question, are we going to have a process put in place before we walk in the door that night, and know what the forms mean, and know what the things are?
Yes, we'll, Charlene and I'll get together.
I haven't had a chance with, to meet with Councilmember Amon to do that. I would suggest we maybe do that before we set the date. I mean, obviously, it would be good to have the process clear, and then set the date. It would be my preference, but...
Okay. Well, ten is early, we'll try to get it set, set up sometime.
Yeah, I think I've got some time this week to meet Councilmember Amon.
I was gone for a week, so I apologize for that. I will be in to talk to you tomorrow, or Wednesday, or whatever day you're available. Thank you.
And you will work that out?
Sure.
Okay, so that we have that made out?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further new business? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this would be under old business or new business, but it has to do with the EDC and some of the recent issues that have arisen there. My concerns are directed at the process, that what occurred, not, it's got nothing to do with Linda Catcher. It's about, like I say, the process that concerned me. We have a lot of joint powers agreements that we participate in with other, you know, with the county. We participate with the school for community ed and rec. And one thing I've always noticed about those agreements is, and I didn't have, couldn't find my copies of the EDC joint powers agreement, or their bylaws, so I stopped in their office this morning and picked up copies. And then I spent the afternoon looking at them. And one thing, and I've looked at the other ones that, that we have, like the community ed and rec, and then other ones that I've seen, and the proposal for the new transit agreement. And one thing that struck me about those, that you don't see in them, you don't see anything about veto powers. They're all about cooperation, and they're very careful, carefully drawn to, to encourage corporation, cooperation amongst the parties, and to, to make sure that no, you know, one participant has more power than the others. They're really, I mean, as I look at them, they're, they're kind of unique in that respect, that they have this, everything about them is to be cooperative, pretty much. And, you know, with that in mind, I thought, well, I wonder what happened? And I started looking at it, and then I asked a few questions of, you know, got some history on, on the background, and I understand that the practice there has always been, with respect to the seven operations board members that they have, that county commissioners appointed three, the city council appointed three, and I think with the seventh, they, they alternated that. And that's kind of been the practice, and it's been followed, and of course, then recently that fell apart, and then there was, we had a interesting, or whatever you want to call it, editorial on it from our local newspaper. But when I look at it, and I see that, you know, that there is no veto power, and then I look at what happened, in effect, the county commissioners, with their votes, vetoed the nomination that was sent to them by the city council, and that bothered me. And it's got nothing to do with the nominee. You know, we can nominate somebody else, that's not a problem. But it's just the process bothered me. And it just seems to me that, well, what I'd like to do is, I guess I would, I think there should be some consideration ought to be given to where the county commissioners and the city council can each make three uncontested nominations, and then, and maybe formalize that, what's been an informal practice, let's formalize it, and, and then make the seventh nominee, or, you know, the seventh person, switch back and forth, as determined by either a new election, or somebody resigns, or they're, they serve out their maximum term. And then whoever appointed that person, then it switches, whichever entity appointed that person, it switches to the next one. So it goes back and forth with respect to the seventh person. And I guess, to me, I think that would encourage, it goes along with the way those agreements are drafted, I think, and it, I think, and it makes sure that the participants each have an equal say at all times, without the kind of problems that, that we recently experienced. And in the interest of avoiding that, I guess I would make a motion that we send a request to the Kanduway County Commissioners to ask them to agree to meet and confer with the representatives of this council, or a couple of them, to consider amending the joint powers agreement between Kanduway County and the city of Wilmer with respect to the Economic Development Commission, and if necessary, do likewise with the bylaws, to provide a procedure for the appointment of the seven-member Economic Development Operations Board that grants the county commissioners and the Wilmer City Council each three uncontested appointments of members to the operations board, and then provides for the power of appointment of the seventh member of the operation board to alternate between the county and the city. And just to kind of formalize the, the cooperative spirit that, that I think these agreements contemplate, and, and I think it would avoid the problem we just had.
So let me see if I understand that. The, what you're asking is for a resolution that would mention this to the Kanduway County To do what?
Well, to consider having the commissioners, and not just the commissioners, but the representatives that we have currently on the, get the correct language here, on the Economic Development Commission. We currently have three county commissioners and three city council members, and I'm asking in the motion that the county board agree to, to have their three members confer with our three to, to amend it, as indicated, so we don't run into this problem again.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. I think that's, that's, that's reasonable. Processes can always be improved. I think what you're really asking is that the joint powers board, which is the three city council representatives, and the three county commissioners, look at that. I mean, that, that's really what you're asking. The only concern I have, and I don't know if it's in the enabling legislation or in the agreement, it talks about four affirmative votes to, to do business. It takes four votes. That precludes, if there's someone gone, that one side, be it city or county, can't, can't override the other side. So that's just a concern I have, and I don't know about the legalities of that, and we'd have to look at that, and we have an attorney that, that could do that. I, I don't have any problem with, with requesting that be looked at by the joint powers board.
Yeah, I think obviously, I think you're correct. It has to meet legal requirements, and I did not have a chance to check those, Councilmember Anderson.
I know the form of, four affirmative votes, I, I don't know where that, I don't know where that lies, so, but we'll know that when we get to the...
That would be part of the process, to figure that out.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Is it possible to request that perhaps the city council and the county commissioners sit down together to have a discussion about economic development? I'm not sure what the driving, dividing force has been, but I think this has been more than just this last appointment. And so maybe it would be helpful to sit down and have an economic development discussion with them, and put some issues on the table to talk about, you know, how did we get where we're at? What is going on? Well, why are we doing, you know, what's brought the divide? There's, there's obviously been a lot out there. And so I'd put in a request that we sit down as the two groups together to have a conversation about economic development, and review the good things that we've got going on, and see where we need to go to get back on track, to be, to be functioning as, as a body that wants to do economic development. So that would be my request, is that before we, you know, get any further, let's sit down together and do that, so...
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Was that a motion, Tim?
Yes.
I'll second it for further conversation. I, I need to understand, although you, you stated in there uncontested for letting, having the city nominate and the EDC appoint their nominees uncontested?
Yeah, correct. That would be the, the four votes would have to be changed, as Councilmember Anderson pointed out. And he's on the commission, he knows what the rules are and what the bylaws require.
Well, it makes a lot of sense to me. It's, if you think about it, we, the city council has three people on the commission, the chamber, or the chamber. The county commissioners have three on there, evenly divided. We bring a nominee to the joint powers board, and a group of people lobby the three commissioners to vote no to the, to the council's appoint, appointee. Now what they're doing is circumventing the voter. I represent one-fourth of Wilmer, the voters in Wilmer, and a group of lobbyists calling the county commissioners overturn the people I vote, that voted for me. I vote, that voted for me, that put me in office, as with the rest of the council. We have three people on that commission. We represent the city of Wilmer, and several lobbyists overturned the citizens' elected people. How can we stand for that? How in the world can we stand for that? We aren't, these people aren't represented here. A special interest group was represented here, who lobbied very heavily, even myself, and they got their way. The citizens of Wilmer did not get represented. So his motion is proper and in order.
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm not disagreeing with going forward with the motion and looking at it. However, I think maybe we need to look at how we got to that spot. Who did the lobbying, who lobbied the mayor? We had an unusual situation where a candidate had accepted and the mayor withdrew her name and someone else was nominated. It shouldn't be about either one of those people. But again, I'm going to go back to say, we need people on the Economic Development Commission that are interested in economic development in Wilmer. And so maybe we need to go back to the nomination process to say, how are we getting the people nominated? And I don't know who you're referring to lobbying, because I am not part of that group. But I think we need to be careful that there isn't lobbying gone on with others, because we've had some unusual situation with mayor's appointments throughout other times. And maybe that's just how it's done, but maybe we need to go back and look at the process of how these boards and liaisons operate and some of the other things, you know, to look at how this council, how this council works with other entities. And there's a reason why it's a removed, where two groups come together to try to do something. And fundamentally, I think maybe we got to step back and look at, what's our goal here for the city? What's the goal for the citizens of this, of this community? And how do we work together? So I, you know, I, I'm offended by the fact that you're saying that people were lobbied when we already know lobbying was taking place at another point in time. So.
You know, I'm not, I don't want to speak for the county commissioners, but I don't think that the county commissioners will have a bit of a problem with this. Whether we all agree, I don't know, but they reached out at the mayor's prayer breakfast, a couple of them talked to me, and I think others, that they want to work together. So I don't think it'll be a problem talking about it. I don't know what the result will be, but I don't think it'll be a problem at all visiting with those folks and doing what the motion requests that we do. Subject to the, you know, whatever the rules and laws are, if it was in the enabling legislation, then we might have a problem. But we should look at it.
Yeah, my purpose here is that we, I think it's just, and it is, it is to talk. I agree with Councilmember Nelson. It's about getting, we need to talk to them. We can't force them, and there's no intent on my part to do that. But I think we need to talk, and I'm just setting, put a goal out there to, you know, get this, get the conversation started.
I would add, we do have a meeting, a special meeting coming up on the 24th, 21st? I don't know if we, if we can add that. It was supposed to be a special meeting for a couple purposes. I'm going to speak right directly to Mr. Rehnquist as the chair of that board. If this is something that we, is timely, you know, and can be added to that agenda, I think it should be.
Sorry, you don't need to.
Assuming that this passes at this level.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
Is it possible to put in a request then? And I guess I'm not sure about doing this motion until we've all sat down at the table and put, and kind of aired what needs to be discussed. So is it something that this motion has to take place now, or can we not sit down as two elected bodies and look at what's best for this region and how we can work together before we try to change the bylaws or change the rules?
Councilmember Christiansen, did you have a comment?
Why delay? We've seen delay tactics time and again by the council, by others. Why delay it? Let's get, let's get this thing moving ahead. It just, it makes sense to me. If it doesn't make sense to other council members, jive in. But it just makes so much sense to me, because this group that's been lobbying us comes to our meetings, bullies us, writes about us in the paper. I'm tired of it. His motion makes sense. Let's represent the city where we can on the EDC, and the county can represent themselves. Uncontested people, they can put whoever they want. I've never voted against anybody that's been nominated by this council or the EDC, including your name for the hospital board and several other positions you've been on, the pining commission. They all came before the council. We voted eight to zero on it. This motion is very proper, and what is the argument for delaying it? I don't understand it. It's a, maybe Mr. Rehnquist could speak to that.
We don't need him.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I do want to comment. It's an emotional thing, and I don't want to make anyone be the bad person on any of this. There's emotions on both sides, so we can call them, whatever we want to call them, lobbyists or whatever. There's emotions on both sides. We need to get past that. I think this is a way of doing it. And we can certainly talk to the county commissioners about having a joint meeting where we just talk about economic development. I, I don't, they'd be happy to do that. I mean, I think we're, that board is all looking for the same thing. The joint powers board, the operations board, they're all looking for the same thing. They just, we've had some bumps in the road. We need to get past that, and we need to move forward. So I think we can, we can certainly do that. I don't know exactly what the, how we would do it, but I will, I will bring it up to them, see if they see a merit in it.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think Dennis is right. The emotions take place on this, and it shouldn't be that way. I was at the meeting, I'm on the board, and it was three, three tie. And just to share with the city council, is we don't have any taped, audio taped minutes of the meetings. You can't get back and listen to them. But, you know, the comments made were quite surprising. And I remember all the years being in the council, especially the most senior people here, we've never questioned, whoever the mayor points, we've always, we've always said yes. I can't recall except in one instance, where it was somebody on the charter commission that was questioned. Other than that, it's always been approved. And that's kind of like the reason why the mayor runs and the mayor gets the position, he appoints. That's one of the most maybe powerful things that the mayor has in this case. And I don't care if the person, like I said at the board, I don't care if the Republican or Democrat, I don't even know Linda Kershaw. I think she came in one of our meetings and spoke once. But this was just appalling to think that, that other groups, another group that we're supposed to be equally represented on, forced an opinion down the throat of all the city council people here. We voted six to one, I believe, to approve her to that position. That, to me, I'm sorry to say, when I was at the meeting, I was quite surprised. And I'm a big boy, I can deal with it, and I'll still get along with everybody, was a slap in the face to everybody here on the council and every person in the city of Wilmer as far as who they're being represented by. It was quite appalling. And, you know, when you started talking, and I just sat back and listened, Mr. Johnson, that was, I think your idea is right. We get three, they get three, case or us or us, let's get ahead and get the job done. We're all for the same thing. We're all elected to represent the people in the community. Let's all move forward with economic development. And as far as having another meeting, we just had our strategic planning meeting, held out at the Oaks with the joint operations board and the full, the full board and the elected representatives, and had a, just had a complete seminar. Mr. Rehnquist was there. But I just want to tell you one thing, that it, I have to get it off my chest. As I told you, get things in your gunny sack and back of your knapsack, and before long, it'll pull you over and you're going to have a massive coronary. One comment that was made by, well, some comments that were made at that meeting that I have to share, was that we were called by a few people. The other comment was, we were even called by city council people on this matter to not vote for it. That's when it really got my attention. Why would somebody who voted six to one, let it lie, it was done with, we made the recommendation, want to stir the pot again? And who they were, they didn't say who. But to me, that was the most disruptive thing of the whole meeting. Let's let the people serve. They want to get involved in the committee, case or us or us, let them come on in. It should never have to happen like this again. And your recommendation, again, I support it. I think that's just hands-on, perfect. We're big boys, we can deal with the seventh, the seventh person, and let's move on with economic development. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Then the second, sir.
And tell me again what the motion is.
The motion is to request the Candee High County Commissioners to meet and confer with representatives of the city council to consider amending the joint powers agreement in Candee High County and the city of Wilmer Economic Development Commission, and if necessary, the bylaws to provide a procedure for the appointment of a seven-member Economic Development Operations Board that grants the Candee High County Commissioners and the Wilmer City Council each three uncontested appointments of members to the operations board, and providing for the power of the appointment of the seventh member of the operations board shall alternate between the county and the city.
Is this a motion or a resolution?
It is just a motion, sir.
Okay. But let's do a roll call.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
I believe Mr. Rehnquist was ready to speak. I don't know if he has anything to say. I'd like to hear from him before we, we vote. If he has something he'd like to contribute.
Should we hear from Mr. Rehnquist before we vote?
It's up to you.
Let's do it.
We got a half an hour?
No, we don't. Well done, Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, very good discussion. And Councilmember Johnson, I think that was an equitable solution. And right off the top of my head, somebody that studied our organizational documents and our bylaws, I'm not, I can't think of a reason why we couldn't do that, but I don't, I wasn't there at the very beginning. The EDC has been around for just over 11 years. I've been there for almost 10 and a half. I think it's, it has a record of almost amazing success. And this is probably the first major bump in the road that we've had between the city and the council on this issue. So let's please not let this thing be a divisive force and keep the city and county from further cooperating with the EDC. But also, there's other ventures that could be coming down the line or that are even being discussed. And let's not let this be a divisive force. As far as planning together, we've had a series of amazing success. You know, I, just to name a few, when they closed all those regional treatment centers, Wilmer's the only city that did anything with it, even to this day. When Bueller, Canadian Egg Manufacturing Company, with two plants in the United States, one in South Dakota and one in North Dakota, Tax Havens, built their third plant, it was, and built it, but they bought it and put it in Wilmer, and they're expanding here. We've got just, it goes on and on, this series of success. When you want to look at, when you even talk about the Bushmills Ethanol Plant, I don't know that people remember, but we borrowed $5 million to that project to help, help them get it to locate it here in Candee High County. Wilmer, you're, what are you, about 43% of the county's tax base? You loaned close to $2.5 million to Bushmills for that plant, or guaranteed the loan, I should say. You didn't loan it, but you guaranteed it. So you see what, how we've worked together over the years to make many things happen. And this is already on the agenda for the 21st. It will be discussed. I believe that calm and diplomatic heads will find a solution to this. And I think this was a good discussion tonight. But again, let's not overreact to probably the first major issue in these past 11 years. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You're welcome. We have a motion and the, on the table, and the, we're going to do a roll call on this. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Amon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. So tell me again what this does now. It, the motion will be brought up to the commissioners, am I right?
Correct. You can do it, you can do it through Councilmember Anderson's technique.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further new business? Announcement of the council meeting dates, Finance Committee, Councilman Anderson? Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 12th at 4:45. Councilman Christiansen, Public Works?
Tuesday, the 13th at 4:45.
Councilman Amon?
Tentatively, May 21st, Wednesday, 4:45.
Tentatively, would that be the?
Well, whatever else props up in between, and we'll put on the agenda plus the city administrator's review process.
Perfect. Labor Community Development, Councilman Fagerly?
No meeting.
No meeting?
No meeting.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. We are adjourned.